Good evening, everyone. I am the President, Malley Rosado, and I am calling to order this public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Program 46 for your 2020-2021 today, June 29, 2020. Thank you to everyone for joining us, and thank you for everyone who signed up to speak with us this evening. The council is here to hold our annual hearing for CDBG funding allocations for fiscal year 2021. Joining us this evening is Councilwoman Sturgeon, Councilman Gale, Councilman LeBron, Councilman Sanchez, Councilman Clark, Councilwoman Bermudez, and Councilman Mixtem will be joining us shortly. I just want to make clear that this year, the City of Hartford is also receiving funds from HUD under the CARES Act to help prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. The council has already acted on those supplemental funds, and the city has already submitted its paperwork to HUD for that. This hearing is about the regular CDBG allocation that the city receives annually. For HUD funding, the council's role is to act on behalf of the City of Hartford to do three things. The first, the council holds this hearing. Anyone can come to the hearing to advocate for approval of an application for the CDBG, ESG, or HOPWAP, or about the CDBG program in general. Then, the council reviews all the applications that were received this year and reviews the mayor's recommendation allocation and the overall plan. Finally, the council acts to make the final allocations of the CDBG, ESG, and HOPWAP. For those that are viewing with us tonight, the Connecticut Development Block Grant is also referred to as the CDBG. Housing Opportunities for Persons Living with AIDS is the HOPWAP. Emergency Solution Grants is the ESG, and Home Investment Partnerships is referred to as HOME. Finally, before we start our hearing tonight, we have also with us the Office of Central Grants, who handles the administration and support to the council in doing its CDBG hearing and review each year. They are with us here tonight, and they will be helping out with this hearing. So, thank you to Lina Wrigler, Senior Project Manager, and Ronnie Vasquez, Project Manager in Central Grants. They are here to answer questions, and will be taking notes for us tonight. All public comments are recorded by them and reported to HUD as part of this process. And I also want to thank Joan Behr, the Director for Central Grants. With us this evening will be Councilman John Gale, who will also be our timekeeper. Everyone has three minutes to speak. And I will leave the floor now to Joan, who has a few words to say about the CDBG program before we actually begin. Joan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Council President, and all council members. Thank you for holding this hearing this evening. We really appreciate all your help and everything you do on this process. I don't want to go through the usual presentation this evening. It's an odd year because of the coronavirus and all the restrictions on how we hold the hearings. Usually, this is a big hearing attended by so many people in a big crowded room, so it's a different thing. I just wanted to focus for a minute on the citizen participation aspects of CDBG. We've been working, Central Grants has been working with the departments and with groups around the city since January on this process, taking citizen participation in hearings and community meetings, and that has resulted in our new consolidated plan and the allocations this evening. But I just wanted to let everybody know, all of those documents this year, because we can't keep them in hard copy available at the Central Grants offices, we usually do, they are posted online, and we've done all usual newspaper notifications. You'll see those. But we also have used the Development Services page that's really good for public notices. You should check it out. It's called planhartford.com-publicnotices. And if you go there, you'll see a copy of the resolution for CDBG. You'll see a copy of the consolidated plan and the other documents that are part of this process. And they're available and have been available since last week, on the 23rd. They're available for a whole 30 days. And so, in addition to this hearing where you come and speak, Central Grants is available virtually for the entire 30 days for anyone who would like to make any comments on any of those materials on the hearing tonight, on CDBG, or HOPWAP, or ESG, anything at all, please reach out to us by email. All of the information is on planhartford.com-publicnotices. Thank you so much. And Council President, back to you.
Thank you, Joan. So, I believe we now have Art Feldman with us. Is that correct, Art?
It sure is, Council President.
Wonderful. Nice to have you on board. I'm going to ask that you move your phone until I do call on your name. With that said, the first person on our list is Deb Rogala. Deb, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. My name is Deb Rogala, and I'm with Community Partners in Action. We've been around since 1875. I just wanted to start by saying thank you to all the council members, to CDBG staff, entire City of Hartford, and all of our community partners. You have been funding CPA's resettlement program for many years, and we do appreciate that. The goal of the program is to really assist individuals prepare and accomplish a successful return back to the community from prison. Second goal is to really help bridge the gap of services for those individuals. Third is to enable people release to build a new life for themselves and their families. And then, the fourth is ultimately to reduce the recidivism rate in Hartford and Connecticut. As you all probably know, the cost of incarceration is over $50,000 to keep one person in prison for one year. And so, the work that we do is critical. For those of you that don't know, we've moved our resettlement program to the new reentry center that's located at the City Hall, which has become the hub of reentry services for Community Partners in Action. The goal of that program is to work with 150 individuals annually. We've already worked with 290 individuals. The services have been open during COVID for those individuals that are released from prison and dropped off by DOC, which is a huge piece of what we do. We work specifically with EOS population, which means end of sentence, which targets those individuals that have no services when they come back to the community. They're not on parole, they're not on probation, and no other services are available. We have 40 partners that we work closely with, and we're proud to be in the City of Hartford. I wanted to end with just a quote from one of our recent clients that got out during COVID, and it says, "I was lost in the dark. I was imprisoned because of my mistakes. But today, I found clarity, thanks to the resettlement program and reentry services that have shown me loyalty. I met with hardworking people who believed in me and helped me overcome my obstacles and achieve my goals. Today, I am working full-time, and I'm living in a sober house." I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm cognizant of my time as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you. Next to speak is Patricia Kelly. Patricia, you have the floor. Patricia?
Yes, I'm sorry. I had some technical difficulty. I hate to-
No problem. Go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening, council members. I'm Pat Kelly, President and CEO of the Ebony Horsewomen. We've been operating in Hartford for about 36 years now, and I want to speak to you about the mental health concerns of our children in Black and Brown communities. Overall, mental health conditions occur in Black and Brown people about the same or less frequency than in white Americans. However, the historical Black and Brown experience in America has and continues to be characterized by trauma and violence more often than their white counterparts, and impacts the emotional and mental health of both youth and adults. The historical dehumanization, oppression, and violence against Black and Brown people has evolved into present-day structural and institutionalized racism, which cultivates a uniquely mistrustful and less-than-desirable community experience, characterized by an assortment of disparities, including inadequate access to and delivery of mental health care. Processing and dealing with layers of trauma on top of the uncertainty, the isolation, the grief, combined with now the call-down and protested police brutality and its counterparts in the news media, social media, and the divisive political rhetoric adds compounding layers of difficulty for people, especially children and youth, to respond and be able to manage this reasonably. Because of these factors, Black and Brown children are more likely to experience chronic and persistent, rather than episodic, mental health conditions, oftentimes untreated because of stigma and mistrust of the traditional mental health care and its applications. School will begin in the fall with social distancing and other protocols. And I fear that the issues of COVID, the civil unrest, will spark and unleash many of these traumas in our classrooms. Ebony Horsewomen is in a unique position with a unique culturally competent therapeutic approach through equine-assisted therapy, a therapy without stigma to help these children. And we are hoping that the city can understand this concern and lend its support, as you have in the past, with this approach. We've been doing this for 30 years, 36 years, actually. We know a little bit about what we're talking about. So, we're asking for the continued support so that we can help all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gale? Let me un-
Thank you. Ms. Kelly, if you could, just wondering, the administration has proposed a certain dollar amount for your program. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's $10,000 at this point. If that amount increased by $5,000, how many more Hartford children, if you can say, how many more Hartford children would you be able to engage in your program?
With an additional 5,000, at least 12 to 15, counting in the cost of the therapist that is needed. So, it would be an additional 12 to 15 children that we could help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Do you currently have a list of children that have shown interest in the purchase-
Since the quarantine, we've been working with at least 25 on a weekly basis, mostly three to four times a week since the quarantine. So, the short answer to that is yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Patricia. Next is-
I have a-
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Bermudez.
Thank you. Through you, through the Council President. My question was, the ideal number, I mean, I know that you've all done an amazing service to the community, but what's, if you could have that ideal number, in terms of how many more children you'd like to assist, what would that be?
So, the ideal number would be 50, but you know what? The OEC, Department of Early Childhood Education, and Department of Agriculture has regulations on how many can be served in a location. I think the number is 50, but, and that's fine during the summer and maybe some portions of the fall, but when we get into winter, because of COVID, social distancing, I think that the ideal number would be between 25 and 28, to make sure that we are doing this safely and within all the CDC and state regulations.
Okay. And then, in terms of the price range of what that would cost, how much more funds would be needed for that number?
Well, according to the calculation that I just previously gave, that would cover, again, the 25 to 28 at the most, again, but more if we were able to bring in more children at one time. So, that additional 5,000 would work well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Wonderful. Thank you. Next to speak is Art Feldman. Art?
Yes, Council President Rosado, and Councilwoman Bermudez, and the rest of the Court of Common Counsel. My name is Art Feldman. I direct a nonprofit called International Hartford, which works with a minority immigrant and refugee entrepreneurs who are building businesses, growing businesses, and in this COVID-19 environment, trying to stay alive as businesses. And we serve 60 clients, all low and moderate income. More than 90% of our clients are minority. Among the services we provide are access to capital, business plans, financial education, market research, business assessment, government regulation navigation, and site selection. All of these are skills that the businessmen themselves and women don't necessarily have access to without the professional help that we provide. We're also known for our food vendor incubator called One World Market that provides an opportunity for 10 food vendors, food trucks, and tables who are from immigrant backgrounds to have access to majority culture customers that they would not normally be able to serve and profit from. That's something we've been doing for several years, as many of you know, and are now engaged in Hartford Hospital. We also have a new campaign called Hot Spots Hartford, which just started this past year, and what that does is it encourages and incites college students from outside the area but who are residents on campuses in Hartford to patronize local minority-owned businesses. It's a social media campaign. One of the reasons for my appearing at this hearing is to inform you of some things, some developments since our application went in, which was the COVID-19 virus and our response to it. As you may be aware, as you are aware, there have been a number of federal, state, regional, and local programs, however, to give relief to businesses that are failing or having difficulty. However, this knowledge has not seeped down into the minority communities, business communities, and people were not aware, certainly didn't have the tools or skills to access these funds. We've been able to get two dozen applications in to these authorities. We were able to determine with the businesses what is the program that works best for them and to actually complete the applications and the finances for them. Of those, we've had, more than half of our applications have been successful. We've brought in between $200,000 and $250,000 in federal funds in the last month, two months, for minority businesses along our neighborhood boulevards. And for this reason, in order to be able to continue this, because more funds are available if the businesses ask for it and know how to ask for it and get help asking for it, we're asking for an increase from 50,000 to 60,000 in our CDBG allocation this year. We had asked originally for 70,000, but we think that with $60,000, we could expand our services in the COVID-19 environment to provide relief to struggling businesses throughout the city. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Art, for those comments. Are there any questions? Any questions? Thank you. Next to speak is Sarah Thral. Sarah?
Hi. Yes. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Sarah Thral, and I am the Executive Director of Rebuilding Together Hartford. I am here tonight requesting that the council reconsider the current CDBG funding of $120,000 to Rebuilding Together Hartford and restore it to the $170,000 that we have typically received and rely. The current proposal shows a $50,000 reduction from last year, which is a 30% decrease from the amount of CDBG funding that we have received in the past six years and the lowest amount we have seen in well over 10 years. This funding is vital to our mission, and the proposed cut will dramatically affect Rebuilding Together Hartford's ability to provide needed home repairs and safety improvements to low-income Hartford homeowners. For over 26 years, Rebuilding Together Hartford has been providing critical home repairs and acceptability modifications to some of Hartford's most vulnerable residents, including those who are age 62 and older, disabled, multi-generational families, and veterans. Additionally, a majority of the homes we assist are female-headed households. Our work in and with the City of Hartford has allowed us to develop strong relationships with the city, community leaders, volunteers, contractors, and, most importantly, homeowners. At its core, Rebuilding Together Hartford is about the Hartford homeowner, and we believe in helping homeowners age in place and doing so in a home that is safe and healthy. We are able to quickly respond to an urgent homeowner need, often restoring their home's heat or hot water in a matter of days, allowing homeowners to stay in their homes. Rebuilding Together Hartford offers a four-to-one return on investment, meaning for every dollar we receive, we are able to make a $4 impact. The community investment we would make with the $50,000 that has been reduced from our operating budget due to the upcoming year's CDBG funding proposal translates to over $200,000 worth of repairs that would be directly invested in Hartford's homeowners and Hartford's communities. This money keeps residents warm by replacing heat and hot water heaters, gives them the independence theme with wheelchair ramps, stair grides, and bathroom modifications, keeps them safe from falls by securing steps and handrails. It allows homes to stay dry and eliminate mold by repairing leaking roofs, windows, gutters, siding. And most importantly, this funding keeps taxpaying residents in their homes, reducing home abandonment and blight. Our impact is seen by Ms. Bonds, a single grandmother retired from the U.S. Coast Guard, who has reduced the tears when a Rebuilding Together Hartford volunteer handed her a book of samples to choose her new siding that would keep the rain from coming into her four-year-old grandson's room. This seen by Ms. Thomas, who told us that she had no idea the porch her elderly mother sat on every single day was unsafe. Our volunteer spent an entire day repairing that porch, making it safe and secure while Ms. Thomas's mother looked on, smiling from the front window. In the past month, we have seen a surge in homeowner requests for assistance, some of which can be attributed to COVID-19, as residents are spending more time at home and are also feeling the impact the virus has had. Even before COVID-19, we were serving over 40 homes per year, and we had anticipated increasing that number to over 50 homes in the coming year. The reality of the $50,000 CDBG funding loss is that many of these homeowners will not get the assistance they so desperately need. I urge you to reconsider the CDBG funding allocation to Rebuilding Together Hartford. The impact this organization makes goes beyond the dollar amount. We are not just repairing homes, we are revitalizing communities and rebuilding lives. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bermudez?
You. Through you, Council President. So, in the past, I've noticed that Rebuilding Together Hartford is in Constitution Plaza directly across from License and Inspections. Can you clarify, so you're all a separate nonprofit entity?
That's correct. We are a separate nonprofit. We're part of a national affiliation that has over 125 affiliates throughout the country, but we are our own separate 501(c)(3).
Okay. I always wondered because of the proximity to License and Inspections and the city. And so, then, are you still in Constitution Plaza, renting there or no?
We are, we are still in Constitution Plaza, yeah.
Okay.
There any other questions? Thank you, Sarah, for that presentation. Next on the line is Susan Mazur. Susan?
Hi there, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm Susan Mazur, and I'm the Director of the Youth Arts Institute at Charter Oak Cultural Center. Because of your support, Charter Oak is able to fulfill its mission of doing the work of social justice through the arts. We're now in our 19th year, and we serve over 1,000 students each year with completely free arts education. We believe that everyone should have access to the arts regardless of income. With continuing budget cuts in Hartford Public Schools, very few schools have complete arts programs. The superintendent reiterates that this is why there is an ever-increasing need for partnerships with community arts organizations like Charter Oak. Our Youth Arts Institute offers free classes held after school, in the evening and in the summer. Charter Oak's program includes classes in hip-hop dance, drawing, gardening, rap poetry, and cooking, just to name a few. Classes are held both on-site and in partner schools across the city. We primarily serve the community schools, which tend to have the least resources. At Buckley High School, we provide dance and art classes to students with disabilities. Most are wheelchair users and nonverbal. The Hartford Public Schools are unable to offer any arts education to these students without our help. In addition to Charter Oak's youth orchestra, we house in New Orleans-style brass band. Students come to the center, receive a hot meal, tutoring by UConn education students, and music instruction assisted by the university's music students. In 2015, we started the Music Matters program, which provides eight hours of instrumental music instruction each week. The students also receive homework assistance, snack, and dinner five days a week. This is the first program of its kind in the city. We also continue to run our Good Vibrations program. Hartford police officers share a meal with Hartford youth, have an impactful conversation about current issues, and then make music or create art together. And this program won a White House Champions of Change Award in 2015. Charter Oak immediately sprung into action in March when classes were no longer being held on-site. Every class was either held virtually, or students were provided weekly videos, lesson plans, and links created by their teachers. We are currently and were in direct contact with every family, delivering bags of food, offering free weekly chat and counseling sessions with a Hartford social worker, and free academic tutoring. We made these resources available to anyone in Hartford, not just our Charter Oak family. Our summer camps are also virtual this year. We usually serve about 80 to 90 students, and this summer, we're serving 140. I'm personally delivering 140 bags of supplies for the classes and snacks to every household. At Charter Oak, we believe in encouraging lifelong artistic learning, honoring the diversity of the arts that reflects the cultural life of the community, and finally, in helping our children to create in a safe and nurturing environment. We'll continue to work with the best local artist mentors and link to state and national art standards. We're very, very grateful, we always are, that you see the value in our program, and hope that you will give us the recommended allocation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There any questions? Wonderful. Next to speak is Janet Fremuth. Janet?
Hi there. Thank you for having us. For 40 years, Children Empplacement has recruited, trained, and managed volunteers to support hundreds of abused and neglected children statewide each year. We are the only agency to do this, and we are not widely known because our work is in the court and with the Department of Children and Families. These children find themselves bottlenecked in Connecticut's overburdened Child Protection System. Many of these children are unable to move out of foster care into safe permanent homes without a guardian ad litem volunteers speaking up for them. While DCF caseworkers have upwards of 30 cases to manage, and attorneys have many more, our volunteers take on one or two cases at a time. In 2018, there were 6,892 cases of abuse reported in the City of Hartford alone, of which 1,210 of those were accepted. This does not include the hundreds of cases that go through the probate court. The leading cause of abuse and neglect is poverty and substance use. Hartford, as well as Waterbury and Bridgeport, saw child poverty rates rising over the last five years. CIP's volunteers take on the toughest cases and provide a thorough report to the courts so that the judge can make an informed decision on a safe, permanent placement of a child. There is much work to be done. With the Department of Children and Families Initiative to keep more children with their family or relatives, the process that CIP, that our volunteers assume is critical for the neediest of children. Studies show that when a GAL volunteer is involved in a child protection case, the child and their family receives more court-ordered services, the child's case is more likely to be permanently closed, and the child is on a road to permanency in a shorter period of time, as compared to children in child protection cases without a GAL to represent their best interests. CIP relieves less than half of its budget from state funding, and we rely heavily on the funding from the cities and other funders so that we can continue to provide that much-needed service to many children that we service each year. Our regional office in Hartford- Our regional office in Hartford manages cases throughout greater Hartford area in both probate and Superior Courts. While not all of them are from the city of Hartford, we do take 100% of the cases assigned to us. If you remember nothing else, please know that the volunteer is the one voice whose sole allegiance is to speak up for the child's best interests while simultaneously monitoring the child's ongoing safety and standing by the child as they endure court trials, motions, and hearings. Our volunteers ensure that potential barriers that could otherwise impede the child's path to a safe and permanent home are moved as quickly as possible. Thank you for your time.
I have a question through you, Council President. Janet, you mentioned earlier that there's connection there with the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. I just wanted to...
That was, yeah, that was a different program. We started the new program, Youth Sponsors, like I said, this past year. This program that we've had has been ongoing for 40 years, and we are, we serve children in both probate court, which handles children that where, you know, a family member comes in and says, you know, something's going on with the child's parents, and we need to, we want to take guardianship of the child. For example, in Superior Court, DCF is involved, where they've taken the child from the family, and that's how that happens. So we serve both in probate and Superior, and this is specifically for child victims of abuse and neglect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carter Lennon. Carter, are you with us?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Carter Lennon, and I'm the Grants Administrator at Not My Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Our community-based mentoring program is not included in the annual plan, and I asked the council to reconsider our request for CDBG funds. Our community-based mentoring program provides one-to-one mentoring between at-risk youth and mentors. Kids and their mentors meet for six to hour, six to 10 hours each month, engage in activities to improve their social, emotional, and academic outcomes, and of course, have fun. Beyond mentoring, we provide youth and their families with service referrals, monthly case management, and other services. During the COVID-19 pandemic, kids and their mentors have been connecting virtually to play educational games, cook together, and talk about the effects of quarantine. Our COVID-19 resource toolkit is a national model for other Big Brothers, Big Sisters affiliates across the nation, and we've been trying to address other needs. So we've been delivering food prescriptions. We've provided 22 of our Hartford kids with smartphones and two free months of service courtesy of AT&amp;T so that they can connect with their mentors if they didn't have a device already. In Hartford, we serve approximately 70 kids each year, and we have almost that many on our waitlist so that 70 families in need of extra support for their children. This year, 92% of the Hartford kids we served received free, reduced-price lunch, and 83% lived with one or no parent. So with CDBG funds, we can take youth off of our waitlist and provide them with mentoring for an entire year. A few stats on the kids we served last year. 89% improved their academic performance. 93% were better able to express their feelings, and 87% had improved family relations. So we ask for your support to continue to serve Hartford youth. Youth like little brother Leo, who we matched with his big brother Phil Getz right before COVID-19 hit Connecticut. Leo is a bright and inquisitive six-year-old, and his mother requested a highly educated big brother who would foster Leo's scientific curiosity and give him one-to-one attention. Phil is an engineer at ESPN and mails Leo activities for them to undertake together. Lego kits are a big hit, as are snap circuits, which teach Leo about electricity, circuitry, and how individual parts come together to make items like doorbells, radios, and voice recorders. As a result, Leo learns how to follow directions and solve challenging problems while having fun. I also want to tell you about 11-year-old little brother Isaiah and his big brother Pablo Figueroa, who we matched in June of 2017. Isaiah and his mom have been homeless and currently live in an unsafe neighborhood. Before COVID-19, Pablo would pick Isaiah up to play basketball, which gave him time to talk. Pablo is working with Isaiah to express his anger appropriately, not react on impulse, and to think about his actions. They now connect over FaceTime during COVID-19 to talk about books that they're reading together, and Pablo helps with his distance-learning assignments when school is in session. With your support, we can continue to serve amazing kids like Isaiah and Leo. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from Council? Councilwoman Gail?
Yes, thank you. I understood you to say that the mayor's recommended CDBG funding does not include any money for Big Brothers, Big Sisters this year. So I have a couple of questions along those lines if you could just follow through for me. A, in the past, have you received money from CDBG? And if so, how much? And then B, the comments, staff comments indicate that several of the items that you're looking for funding for don't qualify for CDBG. So wondering if you've, you know, taken that feedback and understanding that feedback could tell us, you know, something that would qualify and whether, I don't know what your budget is for Hartford, but what $5,000 or $10,000 could or could not do for you?
Thank you. So we received funding during fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19 for a different program, our Foster Grandparents Program. I'm not sure what wouldn't qualify about our current application. We didn't receive any feedback. That would lead me to believe that we didn't. We just saw in the plan that we weren't allocated any funding, so I'm not sure how to answer that question. And $5,000 or $10,000 would serve between like 10 and 15 kids for a year that are ongoing, or four to six new matches. New matches are more expensive because we have to do comprehensive screening of mentors, training, and then we do an in-depth assessment of each child and their family and connect them to needed services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next to speak is Adriya Giordano. Adriya Giordano?
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam President, Council members, Joan, Lionel, and Ronnie. My name is Adriya Giordano, and I am the Director of Development and Communications at Chrysalis Center. Thank you for having us here this evening. Chrysalis Center is a private, nonprofit, socially innovative, multi-service organization that serves individuals and their families living throughout Connecticut. Chrysalis helps those living in poverty, veterans, men, women, and families who are struggling with mental health, addiction, HIV/AIDS, those returning from incarceration, homelessness. And for the past 20 years, Chrysalis Center has provided supportive services to individuals living with HIV/AIDS in Connecticut. We are grateful to the city of Hartford for the two HOPWA funding recommendations. The first grant will be supporting Chrysalis Center's Community Housing and Health Services Program, or CHHS, which provides support services and rental assistance to individuals and their families in greater Hartford living with HIV/AIDS. The second grant will be supporting Chrysalis Center's St. Philip House program, which provides support services to individuals and their families living with HIV/AIDS who live in central Connecticut. The two HOPWA grants truly provide resources needed so individuals living with HIV/AIDS have access to safe, affordable homes and vital support services. You all have been tremendous supporters of our programs in the past, and last year, I was honored to introduce one of our case managers at Chrysalis Center for more than 20 years, and he had with him one of our participants, Eugene, who actually spoke on the impact, having a safe place to live, how it transformed his life. If I could speak on behalf of all of our clients, I would, but I simply cannot. They are not here tonight to tell you that Chrysalis Center's Community Housing and Health Services HOPWA program and St. Philip House HOPWA program provide critical support services to help them and their families living with HIV/AIDS and experiencing mental illness, substance abuse, and homelessness. We are so thrilled and appreciative of your funding recommendations. For more than two decades, Chrysalis Center has provided HOPWA-funded scattered-site housing and supportive services to persons living with HIV/AIDS through its Community Housing and Health Services CHHS program. In addition, case management and employment services are provided to clients, which allows them to receive treatment and entitlements to improve their quality of life. This includes managing physical and mental health care, how to deal with medical challenges, how to support and maintain affordable housing, entitlement benefits, job training, education, and linkages to employment resources. In June of 2017, Chrysalis Center acquired St. Philip House in Plainville, which has supportive housing for individuals and families living with HIV/AIDS. St. Philip House has eight one-bedroom units and a house across the street that serves one additional HOPWA participant and his family. Chrysalis Center has a proven track record of successfully moving individuals and families from homelessness to home. We will not stop until every single person and family has a safe place to live and critical support around them. Now more than ever, with the COVID-19 pandemic, our staff has been reaching out daily to connect and help our clients, ensure they're receiving food, treatment they need, and provide additional emotional and medical support. We're very grateful for your partnership at HOPWA Fund. Thank you again for your very important continued support.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Next to speak is Vicky Gallin-Clark. Vicky? Vicky, are you here with us? Vicky? Okay. Has Calvin joined us? Calvin? Lovejoy? Next is Barbara Shaw.
Good evening, President Rosado, Majority Leader Clark, Minority Leader Bermuda, and other members of the council. My name is Barbara Shaw. I'm the Executive Director of Hands-on Hartford, a local social service nonprofit based here in our capital city. And I bring greetings and gratitude on behalf of our staff, board, volunteers, and the thousands of area residents we serve each year. I'm also a longtime resident of Hartford, a community I've been proud to call home for over three decades. Hands-on Hartford is a 51-year-old Parkville-based nonprofit that ensures food and housing stability for our most vulnerable neighbors, provides critical health support services, and operates a community-facing cafe, catering business, and shared kitchen. We appreciate very much our longstanding relationship with the city of Hartford. For many years, we've received funding from the HOPWA program that allows us to provide rental assistance and support services to assist folks living with HIV in the community, including at Zezo House, where we provide case management services. Over the years, we've also received CDBG funding, which has this past year supported our kitchen for Hartford low-income resident-owned and Hartford-centered culinary businesses. This year's HOPWA and CDBG grants have allowed us, including during the COVID crisis, to serve Hartford residents critically important now when our neighbors living with complicated health issues are especially in need of access to food, care, and treatment, and during a time when small businesses are facing unprecedented challenges. It's our great honor to continue to support these hard-working small businesses with your help. The CDBG grant allows for business development support through Reset's incubator program and mentoring opportunities, as well as access to Hands-on Hartford's licensed commercial kitchen, all vital for the long-term success of culinary businesses in Hartford. The CDBG Culinary and Micro Enterprise Support Grant has allowed Hands-on Hartford to make those services available to nine eligible businesses this year through ongoing workshops, plan development, business plan development, and subsidized access to a licensed commercial kitchen, consultation, and other supports for business and product development. Despite the recent COVID-19 crisis, classes and consultations have continued, albeit virtually, and the commercial kitchen remains accessible to our members 24/7. The CDBG-supported businesses have achieved milestones for successful business exploration, launching, and growth, and are grateful for the support of this grant. So thank you again for your ongoing support of Hands-on Hartford and the many city residents we serve, and we hope that you'll continue your support in the coming year. Please know that your leadership continues to benefit the hard-working business owners and customers from Hartford and further afield who enjoy our participants' unique culinary creations. I hope in the months and years ahead we'll continue to grow our strategic partnership with the city, and I stand ready to answer any questions you may have, although it's possible that one of our partners who's speaking next, or one of the business owners who's speaking later, might shed further light on things. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Great. Next to speak is Vicky Gallin-Clark. Vicky?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, members of the city council. My name is Vicky Gallin-Clark, and I'm the Executive Director of the Blue Hills Civic Association. I also refer to it as BHCA. Last week, we celebrated 58 years of serving the greater Hartford community. We are known for youth development. We serve over 1,200 youth annually. We're the second-largest employer of youth in Hartford. And when we submitted this CDBG proposal back in February, we were looking at developing a youth organizing leadership academy for 50 youth to actually address the school-to-prison pipeline. But since then, so much has happened with the coronavirus, with this escalating HO virus of racism. And so not only will the youth be addressing the school-to-prison pipeline, they will also be looking at addressing police reform, appointments of judges and district attorneys, access to affordable housing and equal employment, inclusiveness in the legislative process, and a myriad of other issues as it stems from racism. We have formed a youth coalition. Many of you may have seen it on June 16, where over, close to 30 youth came together across agencies to really talk about how racism is impacting them in a lot of different areas. And so we will build upon this youth coalition that has formed and continue to work across agencies because we're not going to do this work in isolation. Gone are the days where one agency can say that they can do it all. We cannot. So we'll be looking collaboratively across agencies to get this work done. You will see and experience podcasts. You will see and experience youth town halls, personal one-on-ones that the youth will do with you, and participation at the state capitol, to name a few. I hope that you will vote affirmatively to fund this initiative, but also, there were some things that came out the last several months as we were in this, as we're still in this pandemic, as our agency was helping small businesses apply for the emergency grant for small businesses. We started working with agencies and businesses that were owned by blacks and African-Americans in North Hartford. And what became very apparent is their need for back-office support. We want these businesses to be able to be as competitive as businesses in West Hartford or Glasson Bay or Avon. And right now, they are not because they don't have the back-office support. So I implore you to also look at additional funding so that we can help these businesses thrive. And I just thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vicky. Are there any questions? Any questions? Next to speak is Sarah Bodley. Sarah?
Yes, good evening, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Bodley. I'm the Executive Director of Reset Social Enterprise Trust in the Parkville neighborhood of Hartford. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the partnership with Hands-on Hartford and Reset for our food entrepreneur support program. With your support last year, we were able to serve a grand total of 17 culinary businesses in Reset's Hartford-based Food Incubator Program, including three of those that were CDBG-eligible participants. And I know you will hear later from one of our participants, Vanessa Trice, who founded Jimmy's Seafood Hut. Reset works with mission-driven startups. We help them grow and strengthen their businesses. And since 2013, Reset has supported over 150 entrepreneurs through our Impact Accelerator, our two-student incubators, and this food incubator program. And we reach hundreds each year through our events and workshops. Last year, our alumni supported 305 jobs and generated over $11 million in revenues and investment. The world right now is at a crucial moment, with COVID-19 having exposed so many inequities that exist throughout the world and throughout our communities. Restaurants right now are closing faster than other businesses, and it's going to take a really concerted effort to make sure that we can come through this crisis stronger than before. Using business as a force for good, there's a real opportunity to shift the narrative through social entrepreneurship in Hartford. Reset has years of expertise helping entrepreneurs navigate sustainability and social responsibility as they grow their businesses. The Reset Food Incubator in partnership with Hands-on Hartford stimulates entrepreneurship at the community level and grows the skills and the capacity of entrepreneurs who are interested in launching and growing a food business. We particularly do focus on serving underrepresented entrepreneurs, our low-income Hartford residents, who have the culinary skill but may lack the business know-how or the networks to succeed on their own. The incubator model has a customer-heavy approach. We're expecting these businesses to make their first sale or to increase their sales by the end of this program. And to do that means they really have to know their customer. I'll share a quote from one of our recent graduates, who said, "The incubator provided me with access to knowledgeable, bright people who understand the needs of food industry entrepreneurs. The staff of knowledgeable, hard-working, and down-to-earth people at Reset have provided me with direction, contacts, and seminars with those who are directly associated with the workings of the food industry." So in addition to our weekly seminars, we really prioritize mentorship and connectivity. We build in peer feedback. And there's a demo day partway through to make sure that these startups are getting feedback on their food, because without good food, what's it all for? Thanks to this partnership with Hands-on Hartford, as well as many others in the region, we're able to take a really ecosystem approach, ensuring that we have a direct means to connect our startups to markets, technical support, kitchen space, and the mentorship and networking that are so essential to the success of any entrepreneur. So thank you again for your time and your consideration to continue funding this important program.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any questions, council members? Okay. Next to speak is Johnny Callis. Johnny Callis?
Good evening, esteemed city council members. How are you doing today? This is Johnny Callis speaking, founder, executive director, and head coach of the Charter Oakhamer Boxing Academy and Youth Development Program. I am saddened to say that we're unable to be there with you today, as has been our annual tradition when we show up in full force with our kids and their parents and our coaches and our staff. But just so that you know, that we're not taking things lightly. We have a few folks who want to say hello to you, and here they are. So I am joined here safely with all my kids, parents, and coaches with masks and appropriate spacing to thank you all in person. We cannot do what we've done over the last year without you. Just to hit some of the highlights, we have increased our enrollment to over 100 children and youth, 75 who come regularly. We're talking girls and boys 8 to 18 years of age. As of last year, we've been growing our programs exponentially. We have increased our Reading Champions program with the Jewish Federation of Greater Hartford. Our adventure-based learning program with outside perspective has increased to adding two programs, a team-building day with our families, as well as our first three-day expeditions with our female boxers. We have built our, or I should say Trinity Colleges and the University of Hartford's collegiate boxing programs by four, which they then supply us with mentors and tutors and college experiences for our children so that they know that college is a reality. And we've doubled our girls' empowerment leadership group as well. Just to let you know that we're not lacking on the boxing front. One of our young men, 15-year-old Lennox Rodriguez, actually won the Western Olympic Trials and was named Team USA and was actually training in Colorado to go to Bulgaria when the pandemic hit. But hopefully, as things clear up down the road, he will have a spot on that U.S. team. One other thing that we started that we're very proud of that happened organically was last summer. One of our parents, who's also our facility manager, Jorge Santiago, started a job readiness building trades program that is picking up steam. And I wanted him to be able to say a few words and then have one of our youth, Vaylin Huertas, speak as well, if I may. Here is Mr. Santiago.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. Thank you for having me. Coach Callis asked me to speak to you from the perspective of the building management. I am thrilled to be here before you, representing COBA and our youth, and we could not have done this without you. My name is Jorge Santiago, and I am a Hartford resident. Five years ago, I started my position here at COBA as the facility manager since the day we opened. With the help of many others, we've succeeded. In my opinion, I am a parent who has a child in the program and now a program director, who is working directly with the kids. These kinds of experiences have allowed us to help and build champions. In my five years at COBA, I have known the staff and coaching staff, and I hold them in the highest esteem. In our youth program, our youth are learning basic trade experiences. They are working together and working in collaboration to complete tasks. These kids are teenagers, young kids and teenagers, and they're doing really well. They're well behaved, and I'm very proud to be working with them as well. With that being said, thank you for having me. Here I hand you, Vailin Huertas.
Hello, my name is Vailin Huertas. I'm 16 years old. I will be a junior at AI Prince Technical High School. I have been a member at COBA for three years now. I personally want to thank you for all of your support over these years as it allowed me to be a boxing member to the COBA family and be a part of the boxing program, COBA Youth Franchise, the Job Readiness Program with Mr. Santiago, the Girls Mindfulness Group, and more. The Girls Mindfulness Group has helped me grow as a person with self-esteem, self-care, and just stepping out of my comfort zone. COBA itself has helped me realize that everything you do in life, you should give it 100% your all, whether in the ring, at home, or in school. As much as they want us to be champs inside the ring, they want us to be champs outside in the real world. Once again, thank you for all of your support. If it wasn't for you, we wouldn't be where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Vailin. Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, how many kids do you have enrolled in this program right now?
We have over 100 children enrolled in the program, 65, 75 coming regularly. Per our grant... Yep.
Okay. What ages? Between what ages?
Eight to 18. Yep, eight to 18 years old. Probably the mean age would be 14 years old.
Okay. And you said, I'm sorry, that you had 100-plus kids that were enrolled and between 65 to 75 regularly attend this program?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, now, out of those six, out of those 100-plus, how many are Hartford residents?
I would say 60%.
Okay. And is there a current waitlist from Hartford residents to enroll into COBA?
No, no, there isn't, actually. We just ran a new orientation group the year before COVID hit. Of course, but now with COVID, we were able to open with great precautions in place as of last Monday. But naturally, abiding by the governor's orders, the boxing commissioners and USA Boxing, we can only have, be at half-capacity. So that would be 20 youth a day. So we are currently, yeah.
Okay, so for clarification purposes, I know that you said that you have 100-plus enroll and between 67 to 75 attend regularly. Out of the 67 to 75 that attend regularly, how many would you say are Hartford children?
45, 50.
If you don't have that information, you can forward it via email. 45, you would say?
Sure, absolutely, yep. The grant, of course, is for children 10 to 16 years old, and I think we are required to have 32 youngsters served, but we have well over that.
Thank you. Councilman LeBron?
Yes, Coach Callis, quick question. Could you elaborate or tell me more a little bit about the gang prevention that you do with the Compass Peace Builders?
Certainly. Well, to be honest with you, we currently are not working with Peace Builders to actively do a gang prevention. We're in the process of reaching out to Compass and their organization. In the past, we did work with Iron Nizarrio, who, of course, is outstanding, and he's branched off from Compass. But we currently are not formally doing a gang prevention program.
Councilman LeBron, you're on mute.
Sorry, just one quick follow-up question. And are you still working with City Councilman or former City Councilman Raul DeJesus?
Actually, Raul DeJesus is no longer on our Board of Directors. We haven't seen Raul in a little bit, but he is always an ally, certainly a legacy member and on our honorary Board of Director. He's always, you know, if we need him, we reach out to him. But I believe he's into other endeavors these days, which, of course, we fully support. Raul was with the program since he was nine years old and, of course, is always supportive if we need him and call him.
Thank you, Coach.
You bet.
Are there any other questions? Okay, moving right along. Thank you, Coach Callis.
Thank you very much.
Next to speak is Vanessa. Trice, Vanessa?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Hello. Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to thank the council for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Vanessa Trice, and I am the owner of Jimmy's Seafood Hut. I would like to elaborate on my personal experience after receiving the CDBG funding. The CDBG fund, sorry, CDBG funding has given me the opportunity to discover if my business actually has what it takes to become successful. Not only did it allow me to become a member of Hands-on Hartford Shared Kitchen, it also allowed me to reap the benefits of business guidance received through Reset. Thanks to the CDBG funding program, I've learned hands-on managerial skills, business organizational skills, marketing tools, as well as how to prepare a business plan. Using these tools has also helped me to increase my volume of customers. I'd like to really, I would like to personally thank Molly and Shane of Hands-on Hartford, who have guided me through this entire process. I'm sure I do not only speak for myself, but on the behalf of other members of the Hands-on Hartford when I say thank you, and that we are truly grateful to have received the CDBG funding. You have given us a rare opportunity. Without having a large revenue to show, it is almost impossible to receive. I hope that the council can see and understand the wonderful opportunity that you have given us all. Hopefully, it will continue to help us, to give us hope. Hopefully, you can continue to give us hope through the CDBG program. Again, I would like to say thank you on behalf of all the members of Hands-on Hartford. Council, thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Vanessa. Next to speak is Alden Woodcock. Alden, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I'm Alden. I'm the Executive Director of Emerge Connecticut. And we've had the pleasure of working with a few of the council members and the committee developing Hartford's Hand Up program over the past seven months and talking to them about the possibility of, you know, bringing Emerge's model to Hartford. Currently, we've been operating out of New Haven now for about 10 years. We're a lot different than most nonprofit organizations. We're both a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, as well as a certified home improvement contractor with the state of Connecticut. So we are actually a construction company that hires formerly incarcerated individuals who are returning home to the New Haven area. We've had a lot of success in our transitional employment model. People are normally with us for about six to nine months as they kind of settle and, you know, get their bearings as they come home from incarceration. We do focus on light carpentry, a lot of training around landscaping, property maintenance. We have multiple contracts around the city of New Haven and start off at $12 an hour and work some contracts that are prevailing wage up to $48 an hour, while they also focus on mental health services and, you know, the training necessary to get the union jobs and construction jobs in the city of New Haven as they sort of, you know, reintegrate into the community. Although we are a construction company and we do provide great training around that, our real goal is to destigmatize mental health services. Another individual on this call mentioned the stigma around mental health and, you know, the punitive aspect of mental health services. And we try to empower people to, you know, sort of try to resolve a lot of the issues that are faced as a result of trauma faced during the time incarcerated and prior to incarceration. So we have a number of different groups. Real Talk, we have a Circle of Security Parenting Class. We have trauma-informed men's groups and clinical therapy onsite, as well as life coaching, supportive services for the individuals that are coming through the program. And our goal is really to just end the pattern of recidivism. We have a 14-year, 14% two-year recidivism rate as opposed, compared to the 47% at the state level. So we've been very successful in preventing people from going back to incarceration by focusing on this mental health and employment aspect. Another huge component of what we do is academic tutoring. We have a really great group of volunteers that have been able to improve people's math and reading levels by at least one grade level and get to the 12th grade equivalent within 40 hours. 88% have reached that 12th grade equivalent within 40 hours of instruction. And about 70% of the people that come through our program are placed in full-time employment once they leave. Our interest is to discover what the needs are in Hartford and see if there's a way we can work with all the wonderful organizations that are presented tonight and others to try and figure out how to best serve both the re-entry and the homeless population who seek to get these employment skills and, you know, address some of the deeper-rooted mental health issues that we've seen be a huge factor in whether or not people return to incarceration. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Any questions? Councilman Gale?
Yeah, if you would, Mr. Woodcock, I'm not clear. Did you, did you actually submit an application to CDBG? Is there, have you been, have you received any proposed funding? Or are you here supporting some other organizations besides your own?
So, yeah, we actually have been working with the Hand Up Committee, that, a program that Hartford's looking to develop. And we are one of the applicants to be a part of that new program. So there has been CDBG funding set aside from the current fiscal year that's ending tomorrow. And I guess, you know, some of the committee members are seeking to secure, and they had put in an application for funding in addition to that for the CDBG budget, you know, for this coming fiscal year to add on to that. And what we're looking to do is get the startup money to open our Hartford office and provide, you know, similar services to those that we've been successful in New Haven serving formerly incarcerated people. So, yes, we haven't, as an organization, applied for CDBG funding, but it's through Hartford's Hand Up Initiative that we're, you know, advocating.
If I may, through you.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Council President. So these were, this was the legislation that was approved last year as part of this process where the city council set aside $165,000. where the City Council set aside $165,000 through the Department of Development Services. I think it would be a great opportunity for us to have a committee of the whole meeting so that we can hear directly from Emerge CT to further discuss.
Duly noted. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, next on the list is Juan Cardona. Juan? Juan Cardona? Is there anyone that still has not spoken that's on the list? Is there anyone on the screen that has not been recognized? Is there anyone else on the line has not been recognized? Juan, are you with us? Last call, if anyone's on the screen that has not been recognized and wishes to speak. Okay. I believe that concludes our public hearing for this evening. I want to thank Jonah and her team, my council colleagues, and everyone that participated this evening in this hearing. Without any other business to discuss, this public hearing is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.